Good evening. We would like to welcome you all to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It is Monday, May 15th. I would like to invite you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Schottke, can you please take the role?
I would be delighted. Good evening, Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Schottke here, Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Matthias.
Present.
And President Fob.
Present.
All here.
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Thank you. Celebrations. Oh, and I should say that in our superintendent is at Harvard right now with a number of cabinet members, and we are pleased to have Ms. Evans, Assistant Superintendent, to be in her stead.
We have two celebrations, Dr. Fob. So I'm going to begin by asking the folks that are here to celebrate with us regarding the end of the year athletics celebrations, if they would come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. President Fob, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Evans, and the Board of Education. My name is Marcus Harris. I am the Athletic Director and Dean of Students at Ottawa Hills High School. And today I'm going to talk a little bit about our fall and winter sports accomplishments. We're in the spring season. Can you hear me? We're in the spring season right now, so we have updates for that later. But right now, I'm going to brag a little bit about the Bengals in the fall and winter season. This past fall and winter season, we had nineteen all-conference and honorable mention student athletes during the fall and winter season. Several of those student athletes are on the honor roll dean's list at their respective schools. Overall, we had about fifty of these students, so not all-conference and honorable mention, but fifty students on the honorable mention dean's list at their schools in the National Honor Society. Eric Stevie, who's one of our swimmers, was a senior captain, and he was all-state academic honors and also All-American Academic Honors as well. So I'm proud of Eric for that as well. We had two swimmers qualify for state swim finals and diving finals, and we had three state qualifiers in cross-country. Also, I do want to acknowledge some of those students who are here with us today. We have Andrew DeBoer and Adam Kuzey, who is part of our all-conference swim team. We have Shayna Figures and Shaylen Ewing, who's part of our all-conference basketball team. And also, we have also, we have from Ottawa Hills, Paris Trotter, who was all-conference in football. And also this year, Paris Trotter was named our Bengals Athlete of the Year. He's a multiple-sport athlete, playing football, basketball, and baseball as well for all four years at Ottawa Hills. So I definitely want to thank these students for their tremendous work ethic on and off the field at Ottawa Hills, and also thank the parents as well for doing such a great job. And thanks, thank you guys for providing us these opportunities, Board of Education.
Good evening, Board President Fob, Assistant Superintendent Evans, rest of our board members. My name is Justin Walker. I am the Athletic Director at Union High School. Now, it's my turn to brag about the young men and women at Union High School. This past fall, we were heavily represented in a number of areas with our fall accomplishments. We had six all-conference athletes, two all-conference honorable mention, six all-district team for our boys soccer team, one all-regional soccer team member, and one all-state honorable mention for soccer. And our coach, Juan Zavala, he was named MHSA District Soccer Coach of the Year this year. So we were very proud of our boys soccer team, and they happened to win the boys' district soccer for the first time in Union's history, probably in about ten, fifteen years. So we are very proud of them. Moving on to the winter season, we had seven all-conference athletes, two all-conference honorable mention athletes, and one's all-state honorable mention. So we have though, we have a number of those athletes here with us today along with a couple of our coaches. The next four names I'm going to read out to you are the young men and one young lady who actually today signed their letter of intent for college, where they receive either full or partial scholarships to continue their academic and athletic career. So when you hear your name, can you please stand? Faith Talbert will be going to Olivet College for basketball. Michael Anderson will be going to Muskegon Community College for basketball. Jared Sitzma, and some of you may remember Jared from our mind-share event where he spoke at that and he did a great job there. Jared will be going to Jackson Community College to play basketball. And lastly, we have Quantes Jackson will be going to St. Clair Community College in Dayton, Ohio for basketball. And these young people are accompanied by their coaches, Coach Brandon Guyton and Coach April Kidd. That pretty much does it for the Athletic Department, but we want to thank you again on behalf of Mr. Johnson for the support that this board has given to our young people. They have done a great job representing Grand Rapids Public Schools and their family and their friends this year. And we, me and Mr. Harris and Mr. Johnson cannot be more proud of them. So if we could, we're going to plan on having them come around just so you can meet and greet them and acknowledge them. Thank you.
I think we have some proud parents here as well. Would love to.
Okay, yes. And now I'd like to ask Laura Lamore if she'd come forward and share with us her celebration associated with the Down Syndrome Association. I said that twice.
Good afternoon. Ms. Evans, President Fob, Board of Education. It's with great pleasure that we sit before you tonight with a celebration. About two years ago, you took a bold move and you stood with us as we presented and proposed an inclusion model for early childhood special education, getting our youngest learners partnered with their learning peers so that they could be more ready for kindergarten next. So we're creating the next generation of thinkers and graduates for Grand Rapids Public Schools. In that period of time, we've had national recognition, ideas that work has written an article about us. We've had a number of stakeholders from around the state, from Wayne County, Washtenaw County, Ottawa County, Newego County come and do observations and try to model after the work that we're doing. We've had lots of mentorship and great opportunities. And tonight, we're here before you because we have yet another really wonderful outcome of programming, and that is with our community partners with the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Tom Hackett. He is the President of the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan. He's going to tell you just a little bit about that. Introduce our amazing team from Martin Luther King, where we have a full inclusion model going, and the evening will be theirs.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. As Laura said, I'm Tom Hackett, the President of the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan, and I'm honored and very happy to spend this time with you. The Down Syndrome Association is comprised of three hundred and seven people with Down Syndrome and their families and caregivers. Our mission is to be a resource, programs, events, information to enhance the lives of people with Down Syndrome, to be an advocate, including identifying potential members, encouraging membership, championing the well-being of people with Down Syndrome, ensure public awareness, including sharing information about people with Down Syndrome throughout West Michigan, to provide lifelong opportunities, including the support of adoptions, play, preschool, education, health, nutrition, exercise skills, work, volunteering, healthcare, and self-worth from birth through senior citizen status, and to offer family opportunities, best practices, moral support, research studies, communication, support groups, and recreation for all members. Our members range in age from two days to fifty-seven years, while noting that the average lifespan of people with Down Syndrome is now seventy-seven years and continuing to lengthen. On behalf of the Down Syndrome Association, through the work of, the words of Amanda Rhines, the mother of Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy preschool student Cooper Stillman, allow me to recognize Amy Bochan and the team at Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy, under the leadership of School Principal Tricia Mathis. Amanda Rhines wrote in her nomination, "Amy Bochan is Cooper's general education teacher." Amy had never had a student with Down Syndrome, but jumped in with two feet to make this new idea of inclusion work for her classroom. Along with classroom aide Ms. Karen Alum, speech pathologist Ms. Laura Workman, special education teacher Mr. Brian Gast, Amy Bochan created the first full-inclusion preschool program at Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy. Cooper's treated like every other child in the class. They meet him where he is while having high expectations for him to participate in the general education curriculum. During his time in this team-taught environment, Cooper's skills have continued to progress academically and behaviorally. Cooper's teachers care so much about him and his long-term education success that they offered to visit schools with me, Cooper's mother, to ensure that his kindergarten placement will be a good fit for him. I, as the President of the Association, am here to affirm the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan Educator of the Year Award presented to Amy, Karen, Laura, and Brian. This was done at our Saturday, May sixth Winners' Cup Gala. All of these award winners, the school board, and the Grand Rapids Public School community should be deeply proud of this award. And I am deeply proud to represent the Down Syndrome Association tonight, to again honor these wonderful human beings as skilled and sensitive teachers in a Grand Rapids Public School that serves its students so well and with such great respect. Thank you for your time and your support to Cooper Stillman and his classmates, as well as to so many students and all people in Grand Rapids and throughout West Michigan.
We just have a PowerPoint to show you. So as you heard, our team from Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy was recently nominated and honored the Educator of the Year Award from the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan. Mr. Brian. Mr. Brian is our special education teacher and inclusion coach. Ms. Amy is our gen ed classroom teacher. Me, I'm Laura, I'm the speech-language pathologist, and Ms. Karen is our classroom parapro. All four were included by the parent who nominated us and by the association who recognizes that education is a team effort. This is just a quick overview of what we do at MLK, and that's just one facet of early childhood and early childhood special education programs in Grand Rapids Public Schools. We're considered a hub, which means along with other, three other hubs in the district, that we have two general education preschool classrooms, and that's GSRP, and one early childhood special education classroom. Three to five children are placed intentionally in each of the GSRP classrooms with IEPs, and then Mr. Brian and I are embedded right in these general education GSRP classrooms. We're able to work on our IEP objectives with our kids on our caseload, but then also team with the classroom teacher and the parapro to support all students in the classroom. Cooper has been in Ms. Amy and Ms. Karen's GSRP classroom now for two years. We have supported him completely through inclusion in that GSRP classroom, and he's now transitioning in the fall to a full-inclusion kindergarten classroom at either his neighborhood school or a theme school. Because we are a hub, we have enough support in the classroom to really work on interventions for all children. We collaborate and we plan together to identify the needs in the classroom based on our classroom data. For example, in both of our GSRP classrooms, we identified a need for interventions on letter and sound knowledge. We worked in small and large groups, as well as specific intervention groups, to work towards mastery of these skills. As this graph shows, in one of the GSRP classrooms, most of the students were below age level for the expectations for identifying and naming letters in the fall. That's reflected by the green line on the left, while at the end of the year, most were exceeding grade-level expectations, which is that purple line on the right. Also, for using letter sound knowledge, the green line on the left shows that in that classroom, a hundred percent of the students showed below-grade-level skills in the fall, while most are meeting the blue line or exceeding the purple line expectations by the spring. And again, for rhyming, which is a crucial skill for learning to read, by spring, most of the students in that classroom exhibited skills that exceeded grade-level expectations. There are many other ways that we have brought all preschoolers at MLK together. We have Young Athletes, which used to be known as Special Olympics, that provides a gym class for the children. The special education classroom divides in half, and children go with each of the general education classrooms, giving inclusion to all. We play outside together each day, and with this nice weather we've been having, we have picnics too. The students who are enrolled in the special education classroom are also given the opportunity to join the GSRP classrooms for small group or choice time or large group time, depending on their needs. This allows the children to prepare for the demands of kindergarten and to be with peer models throughout the day. We also get together twice a week for music and movement time. The students from the special education classroom again have access to peer models, and all students are gaining empathy and experience with others who might have different needs. Cooper's mom may have said it best. While he may still lag behind his peers academically, he is a fully valued member of the classroom and school community, which has also taught the lessons of acceptance, patience, and kindness to his peers, all while pushing him towards his highest potential. Thank you for recognizing the way we serve children.
Thank you, all of you.
It happens that I know Cooper. He walks around the neighborhood and starts conversations with people, and it's really nice to see his family so happy with their decision. I talked to them when I first moved into my neighborhood a couple of years ago. I was really happy that they're, that they're so happy with GSRP, so it's nice. Good work.
Thank you, all of you. Next on the agenda is a report from the Student Representative. Not here. Then we have public comment for board agenda items.
We have none.
So the secretary's report.
All right, well, good evening, attendees and fellow board members. We have three items, three updates this evening, and my report. And the first is our budget timeline. So the state legislator has their revenue estimating conference this Wednesday, at which point we will learn far more about how we need to prepare for next year. And so please, board members, have the following dates on your calendars. The first is a tentative work session on Monday, June 5th at 4:30 PM. This is prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting. I'd also like you, of course, to keep the work session on June 12th at 4:30 on your calendar. That is our regularly scheduled work session. At both of these, or at either of these meetings, we'll talk about budget to amendments and also the seventeen eighteen budget. And then, most importantly, please ensure that you attend our Monday, June 19, 6:30 regular board meeting. That is when we intend on voting on the seventeen eighteen budget. If you cannot attend, please, please let President Fob and also Julie Anderson know ASAP, as we need to be here. All right, my second update is in regards to committee meetings this month. The Academic Achievement Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 16th, at 9:00 AM, right here in the auditorium. The Finance Committee will meet a week from today, on Monday, May 22nd, at 4:00 PM, also here in the auditorium. And then lastly, the Ad-hoc Policy Committee has been rescheduled for Thursday, May 25th, at 1:00 PM in Room 101. And lastly, for the third year in a row, Grand Rapids Public Schools will be sponsoring Movies in the Park. The district is the title sponsor for two movies this year, at Anabowin Park, located at 220 Front Avenue Northwest. Each of these evenings, there will be a GRPS table with giveaways and school choice information. The first date is Friday, June 2nd, at 7:00 PM, where we'll have a showing of Zootopia. And the second date is Friday, July 21st, also at 7:00 PM, where we'll have a showing of Book of Life. There are some new exciting features for Movies in the Park this year, including a new LED screen, two showings each night, and a new layout at the park. This event is free to the public. If you have any questions, please contact Kyle Prey in the Communications Office at 819-2149. Thank you, Dr. Fob.
All right, any questions about that?
Yes, I want those dates again.
Yes, for the sessions. For the work sessions, all right. So June 5th, 4:30 PM, that's prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting. You should already have June 12th at 4:30 on your calendar. That's our regularly scheduled work session. And then, please let us know if you cannot attend the regularly scheduled board meeting on June 19th for the seventeen eighteen budget vote.
Just a reminder.
Yeah, this is sort of a draft timeline, and once the Finance Committee meets, then we'll confirm what the timeline will be.
The June 19th date is just the last possible date that we've got, so we want to make sure that people.
I just wanted to remind you that at that June 5th meeting, I mean, I can probably come to the work session, then go over to that Ken intermediate one that I have to go to.
Oh, right, right, right.
Wanted to remind you that I'll come and then I'll leave to go.
Good to know. Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, we have three, Dr. Fob. I'm going to ask John Homold to come forward.
Oh, I got it. No, no, this is something else that I was.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Evans, President Fob, members of the board. Not sure which order they are, but I know I have my three. So I'm going to start with the big win that we had just, boy, I can't believe that was over almost two weeks ago tomorrow. So I was asked to do just a big thank you on behalf of the superintendent and really all the staff at the district and everyone who came out to support students on May 2nd. We had a really big win, not just countywide, where we won with fifty-four percent of the vote, more than five thousand, fifty-six hundred votes countywide. But in Grand Rapids, we really brought it home. It was a fifty-eight percent yes in the city, and we, we won sixty-three of the seventy-seven precincts, including we won the first ward by one vote. So the fifty percent plus one really does matter in elections. And I just want to thank the voters and the taxpayers of Grand Rapids for railing behind our students, our teachers, our support staff, the board, and just really being behind this administration in the direction that GRPS is headed. So that was number one. On number two, we have a big event coming up on May 31st at 10:00 AM. This is our first in what is really going to become a series of groundbreakings and eventual ribbon cuttings of our bond projects. The reconstruction of Buchanan Elementary is slated for this next year, year and a half, and we are prepared to break ground on May 31st, 10:00 AM, at Buchanan Elementary. If you have not already seen invites, you will see additional coming out here shortly. And third and last but not least is our list of all the graduation ceremonies. So I'm just going to rattle them down, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the changes. You'll see what we really have done is tried to spread them out. So rather than packing multiple graduations all in on a Saturday, like I think we've all lived through, we've really looked at how do we spread these out? And since Sunshine Church is no longer an option, so we've moved it into the city at Kelvin College. And Kelvin, just to their credit, they've been great partners with us already. So here's the schedule. Tuesday, June 6th, City High School at 6:00 PM at Fountain Street Church. Wednesday, June 7th, is our Adult Education GR Learning Center in KEC Beltline. That's at 5:00 PM at Fountain Street Church. Wednesday, June 7th, is U-Prep at 7:30 at Fountain Street Church. Thursday, June 8th, is Ottawa Hills at 5:00 PM at Kelvin College's Vennord Arena. Thursday, June 8th, that same day, Union is at 7:30 PM at Kelvin College's Vennord Arena. And then Friday, June 9th, we have our Community Transition Campus, KVO, Lincoln School, Lincoln Development Center, and Pine Grove at 5:00 PM at Kelvin College's Vennord Arena. And then later that evening, at 7:30 PM, Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori, again at Kelvin College's Vennord Arena.
All right, we have several action items here. First is the budget resolution for the KISD. KISD, do I have a motion for approval or support for?
So moved.
For it. Any deliberations, questions?
All right, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Fob.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for a second reading and final adoption of Bylaw 1005 District Authority?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
Any deliberations or questions? I take the vote.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Fob.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for a final adoption of Bylaw 1015 District Mission Statement?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions, deliberations? Ms. Schottke, take the vote.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Fob.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a...
Yes. Do I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to actually bring this back to a first reading with an edit. It was brought to my attention that we actually had a discrepancy in the majority vote required to suspend a board bylaw. And so the, the original policy read two-thirds majority to amend the bylaws, but only a majority to suspend. So we just want to make that language consistent so that it always takes a two-thirds majority vote in order to make any sort of change to the bylaws. So if I have your support, we'll move that back to a first reading and then do our final reading at the next board meeting.
Support.
Any questions, deliberations regarding that?
So you're suggesting that this, this will be the first reading for this bylaw?
That's correct, yeah.
Because of the change to two-thirds?
Correct.
Okay, take the vote.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Fob.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have a motion for final adoption of Bylaw 1032 Duties and Governing Philosophies?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Questions, deliberations? Vote.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Fob.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And do I have a motion for final adoption of Bylaw 1040 District Goals and Objectives?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matias.
Yes.
And President FOB.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda Grouping. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda Grouping.
Support for that?
Support.
Please take the vote.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatki, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Matias.
Yes.
President FOB.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion items, I just wanted to mention that look for possible dates for the board retreat this summer. And also, if you have ideas or preferences for agenda items for that retreat, please send them my way. FOB is kind of in the superintendent's court right now to put some dates out there, so I want to get that out to everybody as soon as possible. Summer's coming fast and furiously. So, public comment for non-agenda items.
Yes, we have one. I'd like to invite Irma Menchaca forward, please.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Carolyn Evans, board members, and guests. My name is Irma Menchaca. I'm a school social worker at Union High School, and I'm also an Apache Indian from Texas. Geronimo was an Apache Indian. Yay. Last Saturday, I attended and participated in Grand Rapids Public Schools Native American Program's Ninth Annual Children's Powwaw. It was held at Union High School in the small gym. Now, speaking as an individual, I state that it was a beautiful, honoring event. From our veterans posting the colors, to our hoop dancers, to many participants, including a teenager with his brand-new regalia that his mom had just finished sewing. He was so proud. We also had a three-year-old strutting around the circle with his black-spiked Mohawk. He was the cutest little thing. This Children's Powwaw included Huron Potawatomi Head Start Children. The host drums were Circle of Life Singers and Urban Nation. The drum beat was synchronizing with our own heartbeat. It was just amazing. Our own Assistant Superintendent Carolyn Evans was there, who also joined the various circle dances. And I'll close by stating that in the past, I worked with her husband, Robert Evans, at Burt. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
We do not.
Great. Superintendent's comments.
Well, I just would like to remind everyone of the science fair tomorrow night from 3:30 until, I believe, 5:30. So we have about 100 entries, so please stop by.
Ms. Shatki?
No comment this evening.
Dr. Baker.
When John mentioned this earlier, but May 2 vote was fantastic. So there were a couple things to make our June easier, and one was getting that passed. So the things that hopefully we'll get as good of news this week from Lansing, and we'll be ready to do this thing well next week. So anyway, just really fantastic about that, and looking forward to the end of the school year.
Yes, the vote, everyone in the community coming out and supporting our students is always an amazing thing to see, and I'm so proud of the students that we had here earlier to see that they are really student athletes is an amazing thing.
Reverend Matias?
Uh, no comment.
No comment.
I just have a question about my position at this ISD meeting in two weeks. Very concerned about doing the right thing. But was I not supposed to be elected by you or just selected by you?
We'll have to talk after the meeting. I have no idea. No clue.
So I'm not going to worry about it.
I spent about eight years in that group.
All right.
You've been elected.
But this is something else. That's a Julie Anderson question. I have to go back. If you go back in the packet too, there's something in there a couple of years ago. But we can look at it.
All right. Don't worry about that when the time comes.
Dr. Flores.
No comment.
Mr. Ross.
Just to let you know, you unanimously support it.
So you want me to be there, don't you?
Not that it isn't worthwhile.
No, no comment. Thank you.
I just want to express my appreciation too to all the voters for their confidence and support of our schools, and also to the team over at MLK. Fantastic. We are adjourned.